Board meeting to order Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Roll call, Ms. Cindy.
Ms. Richards.
Present.
Mr. Toler.
Here.
Ms. Abrams.
Here.
Mr. Wes Moreland.
Present.
Mr. Duncan. Mr. Bush.
Good afternoon, and I am here.
Mr. Moore. Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Ms. Dominguez.
Present.
I would like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Stilly at this moment.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask the board and our participants that are here tonight for us to have a moment of silence for the loss of one of our teachers at Parent Early Learning Center. If we could do that for a moment, please. Please remember her family during this time, and friends, and colleagues.
All right, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Wes Moreland.
At this time, I'd like to thank the Natal Beni Middle School for giving us our pledge and patriotic song, so we're asking everyone to please stand at this time.
Move on to D, Consider Approval of Board Minutes from February 18th, 2020. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Mr. Toler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wes Moreland. Call for a vote, Ms. Cindy.
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to reflect that Mr. Duncan is here. We're going to move on to 2A, and I'm going to call Ms. Sandra Simmons to start with this before we move on to the Jake Bailey and Beyond Awards.
I don't know how many of you saw the Daily Star today, but we have a celebrity on the school board. A school rep elected to state board posts, and that would be Mrs. Rose Dominguez of the Ponte Tula area, and she has been elected to be the Vice President of the Louisiana School Board Association, so she gets to sit at the big table at the meetings. And so, we're real proud of her because, you know, she's one of ours, and we just wanted to recognize her and applaud her for that.
Did you get her $25 gift certificate?
That's later.
You ready for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Rhonda Ficaro and Ms. Rainey. Tonight, we would like to present you with the Jake Bailey Above and Beyond Award, a certificate of recognition, and I can't pronounce your last name.
Hmm?
Yasidji. Yasidji.
And you still can't pronounce your last.
So, recognition of your being a recipient of the Jake Bailey Award, and we also have a gift certificate to the residents in our town, and we'd like to present you with that and Ms. Ficaro as a presentation for you.
Ms. Yasidji is an incredible woman. Ms. Yasidji is an incredible woman.
Ms. Rose.
Working with her as a teacher and assistant principal, I observed her love, interest, and dedication for students to receive a high-quality education. During this unprecedented time, Ms. Yasidji has fulfilled the roles of principal and assistant principal duties. Her outstanding characteristics of being composed, resilient, compassionate, motivated, and knowledgeable has evolved into an above-and-beyond job performance. She greets staff and students as they arrive every morning and sends them home with a pleasant "good evening," and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Ms. Yasidji spends many hours at home fulfilling the vacancies in classrooms when teachers are absent. She secures the lessons for students and teaches the classes when substitutes are unavailable. Throughout the school day, Ms. Yasidji is in and out of the classrooms, observing and participating in classroom activities. She is always available for listening to and addressing the needs of our students, parents, teachers, and staff. Along with all of the academic requirements, Ms. Yasidji keeps the safety and well-being of the students and staff a top priority. She reminds them daily of the key, three key principles in keeping themselves and others well and maintains a safe and secure school. Ms. Yasidji's above-and-beyond work ethic and job performance are admirable and appreciated.
I just want to, I just want to say thank you for a special recognition, and also to my, to my staff that have been with me for these past, those few months where I was fulfilling both duties, and because of them, we all stuck together and were able to pull through in these unprecedented times, so I'm looking forward to what the future holds. Thank you. Yes, thank you to my mom, my son, and a few of my coworkers that came tonight. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to recognize our Teachers of the Year.
Ms. Mia.
Superintendent Stilly, Madam President, at this time, I would like to recognize our Teacher of the Year representatives from all of our schools, along with the three district winners who will represent our district in the State of the Year, State Teacher of the Year competition. We would like to recognize them for staying the course and being resilient despite the challenges and changes of this unprecedented time, for continuing to learn ways to develop their skills, and always striving to be better for students, for being effective leaders of knowledge and efficient managers of their classrooms, for their love of learning, their love for learning, for loving the learners, and being able to bring those two loves together, together in their classrooms daily. After all, teaching is the one profession that teaches all the others. Our first teacher is Ms. Ever Gordon from Amee Elementary School. Next, we have Natalie Watson from Cham Cooper Elementary. Next, we have Deborah Simmons from Chesbrough Elementary. From DC Reeves Elementary, we have Kenesha Callahan. We have Mary Beth Schilling from Hammond Eastside Magnet. Next, we have Latrice Carter from Hammond Westside Montessori Lower. From Independence Leadership Academy, we have Rebecca Beta. Laranja Elementary, Angela Fletcher. Brienne Dees from Midway Elementary. Lori Morgan from OW Dillon Leadership Academy. Jacqueline Willer from Parent Early Learning Center. Alexandra Huffman from Roseland Montessori. Setley Brown from Southeastern Laboratory School. Dawn Moss from Spring Creek Elementary. Amanda Morris from Tucker Elementary. Nicole Wells from Woolham Park Elementary Magnet. And at this time, I would like to recognize our district Elementary Teacher of the Year, who will be representing our district in the state competition, Ms. Chelsea Malonson from Lucille Nissam Memorial. Ms. Malonson has seven years of teaching experience. She's a first-grade teacher. She volunteers at her church by organizing food drives, and she also assists with youth basketball. She has served as a Special Education Inclusion Teacher, currently serving as a first-grade teacher. She's very passionate about social-emotional learning, and she integrates it into her lessons daily. She goes above and beyond to provide an environment of affirmation in her classroom to ensure students are confident they can achieve any goal. She achieved a score of exceptional attainment on her student learning targets in ELA in math. Dr. Samantha Austin, the principal of Lucille Nissam Memorial, describes her as extremely innovative and enthusiastic about teaching. Her virtual and traditional lessons are engaging, and she's always focusing on the awareness and responsiveness of her students. Congratulations.
I know we normally do, but I have to say this about Chelsea. I taught Chelsea in fourth grade, so that makes me feel really old. We have our district Teacher of the Year, but we're very proud of her, and she's homegrown, you know, from our public schools, a product of our public schools, and it makes me very proud to see her recognized as our district Teacher of the Year.
Okay, next, I'd like to recognize our middle schools. First, we have Ms. Sheila Haywood from Amee Westside Middle Magnet. Ms. Lisa O'Donnell from Greenville Park Leadership Academy. Rita Parker from Hammond Eastside Magnet Upper. Jessica McAllister from Hammond Westside Montessori Upper. Leela Miller from Independence Middle Magnet. Rebecca Reed from Laranja Middle. From Martha Vineyard, we have Janet Haydell. From Natal Beni Middle, we have Charity Cooper. And from Jewel M. Sumner Middle, we have Michael Castle. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our middle school district Teacher of the Year, Ms. Brianne Mater from Ponte Tula Junior High School. Ms. Mater has 11 years of experience. She's a seventh grade, seventh-grade social studies teacher. She's definitely an asset to Ponte Tula Junior High, where she coordinates the annual trip to Washington DC. She directs and co-chairs the grade-level subject and department meetings. She collaborates with other teachers to create and present instructional resources in PD along with the virtual curriculum. She volunteers her time after school for school events and games. She's very passionate about inspiring the creative mind of her students, and her students express how she makes them excited about learning history. Often, they complain about having to leave when the bell rings. Her student connection is key in her classroom. She relates history to their everyday lives. She's unbiased and respectful in teaching history. She's achieved a score of exceptional attainment in her student learning targets. Ms. Mary Beth Cravetto, principal of Ponte Tula Junior High, describes her classroom as one which the students are transported to another place in time because Ms. Mater makes history come alive for our students. Numerous requests from parents for their children to be placed in our classroom is what Ms. Cravette is faced with every year. Congratulations. Okay, last, but certainly not least, we have our high schools. From Amee High Magnet is Janet Crowe. From Hammond High Magnet, Lee Willer. Bridgette Landrews from Kimwood High Magnet. Christina Verbeen from Laranja High. From Ponte Tula High, we have Tracy Butler. Blake Wilson from Jewel M. Sumner High. Alicia Dansler from Tangbo Parish Alternative Education. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our district high school Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jessica Bacero from Independence High, Independence High School. Independence High Magnet, excuse me. Ms. Bacero has eight years, oh, wait, I waited on my baby. That's most important. That's right. That's most important. Got to be a mom first. Come on. That's okay. You got to be a mom first. Ms. Bacero has eight years of teaching experience. She's an English teacher. She has taught English II, Business English, and Advanced Placement English Literature. She currently serves as the ELA Content Leader and provides coaching and support to other ELA teachers. She's the sponsor for the National Honor Society and Creative Writing Club. She's developed an AP Literature and Composition Curriculum approved by the College Board. For those students at any high, she's willing to teach it. When others refuse to accept the challenge, she stepped up and accepted it. She's very passionate about technology, social justice, equity, rigor, and she bets that all of these in her daily lessons by encouraging her students to be responsible, compassionate, and great. She has a unique educational background in law, which she feels empowers her students. She achieved a score of effective of student learning targets across all disciplines that she's ever taught. According to Ms. Chastity Caw, your principal of Independence High School, she recognizes Jessica as an exceptional teacher who possesses a strong grasp of components of an effective lesson with the natural ability to connect with students, also to motivate her students to strive to be their best by using technology and other resources. She also hones her craft, and she participates in job-embedded staff development, and she implements those strategies in her classroom with her students. Congratulations.
She's the star of the show. I would like to thank all of our teachers in the parish. You know, we've got 1,300, thereabout, and we have 32 schools, so we had 32 Teacher of the Years from each of our schools. And then, of course, tonight, the district Teacher of the Years, which is quite an honor. So, we want to congratulate you and thank you for representing all of our teachers in the parish and the work that you've done with our students. So, thank you, and thank the family.
Congratulations, teachers. All very well deserved. We're going to move on to recognition and consideration of the Youth Art Month Proclamation. Ms. Stilly.
Yes, Madam President. We have Mr. Jordan Kinning from Ponte Tula High School Talented Art Program here tonight, and he has a PowerPoint and possibly a resolution he would like to read.
Hello. I'm going to say this way because I can't read behind my head.
So, what are you going to do first?
What's that?
What are you going to do first?
We can do the slideshow, please, first.
Okay, sure.
I wrote some things down just in case I ramble for 45 minutes.
Okay, I had it. I don't know. That's a PowerPoint. I just kind of freaked. I just got a little nervous.
Hi, so my name's Jordy Kinning. I'm one of our three talented art teachers here in the parish, and I'm here to report on the goings-on in our art programs. Before we get into the actual, you know, inside of the classroom, I wanted to give, you know, we all like some facts and figures, so if we can move on to the next slide, I've got something for you. Maybe the next one. There it is. Sorry, whoops. So, you know, just to kind of back the idea, you know, we tend to think of, you know, artists as the people who are looking for jobs most of the time, but that couldn't be the, farther from the truth, because right now, we have about $800 million, a billion dollars going into our GDP from the arts and cultural segments. And if we can go to the next slide, I've got some more specifics. So, in Louisiana, we spend about $6.5 billion in the arts sector, and over half of that is going into direct compensation to artists and creative individuals. And then, so now, if we can move to the next one. Oh, back it one more time, sorry. I did some searching earlier this week and found that there are right now about 200 jobs available in Baton Rouge for artists and creative individuals. That's just in Baton Rouge, so when our students are leaving high school and going into college and then going into the workforce, there are jobs available for them in those fields. These are some snippets from Hammond High School, some students working this past week. In Amee Elementary, Amee Elementary, sorry, these are from Ms. Jennifer Wheeler, some students painting. This year has been specifically challenging for students, and one of the popular art therapy products is called Blackout Poetry, where students create works of literature by selecting pieces from a book, discarded book page, discarded textbook, whatever. So, those are some of the images from that. These are some of my students working this past week in various media. And then, I've got a couple of images from our student exhibition at the Hammond Regional Arts Center. We have a very vast range of student work, anywhere from Emma here on the left, who works in the style of Van Gogh, she's been studying his technique recently, all the way to very contemporary and emotionally deep pieces like Vanessa's on the right. And then, the same true here. We have two students working completely different media in two totally different contexts, but the results are really quite amazing. And then, this year, I was really forced, I was kind of reluctant to dive into digital work, but they, they took the reins and they just kind of ran with it, and these are some of the results. These are all done on tablets or on computers. The one on the right was done by a student. It was completely done at home. She was not, she's a virtual student, so all of that instruction occurred through email and on-course. And then, the next one, you'll see, this is a screenshot on the left of what the student would see working on that tablet and creating that drawing, and it really just looks like traditional illustration, but it's all done digitally. The nice thing is you can hit the back button if you mess up. Can't always do that. And then, the image on the right, there's a video on the next slide. You can show. Just kidding. I thought I gave you access. Okay, we can just move on to the next one then. But by doing those digital drawings on that tablet, on that iPad, I can look and see the students' process step by step, and if there is something that needs to be reworked, we can go back and then look at that. Let me go back to this so I don't ramble again. And the next thing that I wanted to talk to you about is the Young Artists Exhibition at the Hammond Regional Arts Center. Every year, the Arts Center donates that month to students within the parish, both private and public schools. And this year, we thought we were going to have a pretty thin show, but we have well over 100 pieces in that exhibition, and that can be viewed Wednesday through Friday noon to six. And I'm going to step over back to my seat and introduce Melissa Griffin. She's the Executive Director of the Hammond Regional Arts Center, and she's going to mention some things about a grant opportunity for our K-8 elementary art teachers. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. I'm the Executive Director of the Hammond Regional Arts Center, and I'm happy to be here tonight to announce that the Hammond Regional Arts Center is reviving the Maya Levy Art Educators Grant. It's a small annual fund to a deserving Tangbo Parish art teacher. It's based It's based on need and this grant would help pay for consumable supplies or major art projects. Applications will be released in mid-May of this year and the grant will be awarded in August for the 2122 school year. In addition, the Arts Center will call on community members to help support this effort and collect supplies that can be then dispersed to teachers throughout the parish who might not have received the grant assistance. Our hope is to bring attention to the benefits of art education for all students and to make a tangible effort or a tangible impact on this community by enriching lives through culture and the arts. And on behalf of the Hammond Regional Arts Center, myself, Jordan, as a board member, as well as Shayla Kelly, who's with us. She is also a teacher here in Tangier Parish and a board member at the Hammond Regional Arts Center, as well as our staff. Thank you so much for what you do for the children of this parish.
I would like to make a comment. We have some talented students in our school system. I would ask that maybe y'all look online. I know, me being on the Sicilian Heritage Festival Board, we're always looking for artists for our posters. The Strawberry Festival does. We give away a $500 cash prize. So it'd be great if y'all, when the fairs and festivals roll around next year, just to look on their websites because some of these kids would really enjoy doing that, I think. And with the Oyster Festival, the Italian Festival, and all of them here in the parish, they would be great assets to our festivals. Great job. Okay, so we're going to do a recognition and consideration of the proclamation for the arts for this month.
Yes, Madam President. I would like to ask the board to consider and accept the Youth Art Month proclamation. I think we have it on the screen. Whereas the study of art leads to a fuller, more meaningful life. And whereas art education provides substantial educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students. And whereas art education develops students' creative potential and improves problem solving and critical thinking skills by reinforcing and bringing to life what students learn in their other subjects. And whereas art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities and also gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and benefits. And whereas art education advances student master in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our National Art Education Association in conjunction with the Louisiana Art Education Association strives to improve the well-being of our communities by upgrading visual awareness of the cultural strengths of Tangier Parish school system and the United States as a whole. And whereas the residents of Louisiana have joined the National Art Education Association and Louisiana Art Education Association in supporting the youth of our community in their intellectual development and artistic endeavors and offering support to our committed teachers of art. Now therefore, I, Melissa Stilly, M. Stilly, Superintendent of the Tangier Parish School System, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Youth Art Month. All residents are urged to give their full support to quality school arts program for our youth dated this 16th day of March 2021. Thank you.
Do you need a motion or anything? You don't have to vote or? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. To accept the proclamation.
Rose? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Rose, a second by Ms. Sandra.
To accept the proclamation.
Voting, Ms. Cindy?
Voting is open. Voting, excuse me, voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to academic updates with Tangi Streamliner Ms. Dina Spears and Ms. Colette Talion.
Good evening. We are so excited to be here to give y'all an update on the streamliner. So this bus, this concept started a long time ago and it got parked because of everything that's been going on. Well, we are happy to say that it's finally rolling along. And Colette has done most of the heavy lifting on this. So I'm going to let her give y'all the update.
This is Jinko. This is Rizzle, right there.
Magic school bus.
Magic school bus. I was going to be able to be a submarine and go under the water, but it's going to go on the roads. We are ready. Get ready. When you hear the horn, we're coming down the road.
I love that.
I'm going to stand a little further back from the mic because I think I'm loud enough that it doesn't need to pick me up so much. It, we all began, this all began with this crazy idea. We went to a conference. Our neighboring parish had a bus and we walked through it and we said there is no reason Tangier Parish cannot have a bus, an even better bus. And I was just going to be a step up, okay? Go ahead, Dina. So if you think back, I came to you and I played the ice cream truck music and we went along because we wanted to think of it as an ice cream truck with STEM on it. And we figured our motto would be engaging, empowering, and connecting one mile at a time. We want to do that. And the best way to do it is to come out from our offices and our school buildings and to get into the community and let them see us and let them interact with us. Because eventually, we want our kids to get hired here in our parish. So what better way to build and bridge community than by getting on a bus that makes noise and we have fun, okay? Also learning at the same time. We encountered some surprises. We had cyber attack and then we had COVID. And we're waiting for a bus. And, but you know, I started writing grants. We started making phone calls. And we ended up getting $34,500 for this project. So we came to you guys with the ice cream music in our minds and said, we just need a bus. If you could have a bus. And I think transportation got tired of me calling. Do you have a bus yet? Do you have a bus yet? And finally, they came through. Mr. Bill Ford, who retired, donated his bus. And we wanted a bus that had a lift on it because we felt that all kids should be able to get on the bus and have fun. So they came through. Mr. Bill Ford donated his bus to us, which is now going to be the future TPSS streamline. So the first stop was Kent Mitchell Bus. They took out the little bit of seats they had in it. They outfitted it with an RV, all the plugs we needed, everything. We needed to run the bus without the bus being running because the generator would be running. And they cleaned it up. They tuned it up for us. And what you see is the first stop at Kent Mitchell. And then it went on to, and is there now, at Independence High School. Their carpentry class, Frank Beckett and Jody Barnido, with their students, are putting in the counters for us as we speak and getting it ready for us to be able to put all the little STEM activities that we are getting ready to roll around in at different community events and everything. They're doing a fabulous, fabulous job. The next step after they're finished, we are in the process of talking with K Team Printing. We are trying to keep everything we do in Tangier Parish. We want to give the business to our parish. This is our bus. It's not just the school system. It's a community bus. It's the school's bus. It's the kids' bus. It's the teacher's bus. And we want the community to come out and the businesses to come out and work with the kids on the bus. So we are in the process of designing the rack with them. They will be hopefully installing the rack as well. And on the backside at Technology Building, we are working on getting what stream equipment that will be on there. Science, technology, reading, engineering, art, and math that will be on the bus that the students will come on and interact with. So the next time I see you guys, I hope we are unveiling the TPSS streamliner and get you guys on the bus and working with some of those streamers. Deal?
Deal.
All right. I didn't hear you. Deal?
Deal.
All right. Thank you.
That's going to be awesome for our school system. It really is. Great job, ladies. Now we have a presentation of the Panorama SEL Results and Action Plan. Dr. Hurst? Oh, Mr. Porter. I had Hurst on my.
Mr. Porter and team.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Stilly and board. I'm happy to stay here. Of course, I'm not Dr. Hurst. He wasn't able to be here. But we are here tonight to share our Panorama Survey results. We are a team that has worked to roll out a survey in our district and all of our district schools and all of our district, all of our employees, students in grades three through 12, participated in this survey. And let me just kind of go back a little bit and say that this is an initiative that we're working with the State Department and one of five districts that are working with this initiative. And we recognize that coming back into the school here this year from COVID, recognize that our employees and students and all of us have gone through this experience and we knew that having a handle on our employees' well-being and our students' well-being is vital to the work that we do in this district. So this initiative is an opportunity to assess that well-being of our students and staff and put a plan in place that will ultimately help the culture and climate throughout our district. And I want to introduce two other members of our team who are here and they will be doing both of the presentations tonight. But we are happy to be a part of this work. And I will tell you that the survey was very well participated. We had a lot of participation from our staff and our students. And our team is here tonight to share the action plan that we've worked on so that we can make the best use of this data in an effort to help our district continue to move forward.
Thanks, Mr. Porter. Thank y'all for having us back. I'm Amy Fairchild in the LCSW with the Special Ed Department. I'm happy to be a part of our district well-being team. We were here two months ago telling you guys about this survey before we rolled it out. In a short two months, we're happy to be here to show you the results of the survey. Anytime you do a survey, you roll out, especially one that you plan to do ongoing. If you get 40% or higher of participation, you consider that a success. And so I'm excited to show you these numbers up here because these were our response rates for the five surveys that were done. So when it came to our students in grades three through five, over 76% of them participated. Grades six through 12, excuse me, we had over 66%. We had over, we had 88% of our teachers in our district participate. Now, this goes to the efforts of our administrators, of our teachers, because these were given to students that were virtual. These were taken by teachers who are home quarantining. So this shows you just how many people we had engaging. And we know that the results are more reliable the more people that we hear from. So we're not just hearing from fringes who, you know, have something very positive or something very negative. We're hearing from a good bulk of our staff and our students. And hopefully, their takeaway as we go through the results with you all tonight is that they have a voice, that they felt empowered, that they see that their voice is heard, that we care what they have to say and that we're going to do something about it. So first, I'm going to go over the student results with you. This is a review of just the content areas that were surveyed. Our team selected these areas. Coming out of the pandemic, coming out of the quarantine, we felt like these were areas that we really wanted to touch on with our students to get a grasp of what they had to say in regards to these areas. This breaks it down for our grades three through five. This was their response rates. You'll see the topics along with the description of those topics. So with supportive relationships, that's just in general. Do you have someone that you feel you have a relationship with? Then we have a specific question regarding teacher-student relationships, right? So that's not just any support person specifically support from your teacher. With school climate, this is overall perception of the learning environment, of the school environment. Sense of belonging is asking questions about if they feel like they're valued school members of their school community. And then engagement is actually regarding in-the-classroom learning. So do they feel engaged in the content? In the middle, the percentages shows percent favorable. So for instance, if the questions are multiple choice and it says your options are always, most of the time, sometimes, rarely, or never, then it's going to be the top two. So this percentage answered favorably in these areas by always or most of the time. And then on the far right, you'll see the benchmark. This is the national average. Our principals have their school data and they actually are able to compare it to the district average. So we're looking at the district-wide. So we have the comparison to the national average. So overall, we had very positive favorable responses from grades three through five. I just wanted to pull a snippet from one of our strength areas in this age group as well as one of our opportunities for growth to give you an example of the questions that fell in each of the topics. So one of our strengths was the teacher-student relationships. This was 71% favorable responses. And these were some of the questions that they were asked to come to that. How excited you would be to have your teacher again? Do you think your teacher really wants to know when they ask, how are you? So this was really interesting data. An opportunity for growth for this group, still at 60%, which is, I would think, pretty positive. But we can see some room for growth. So this is engagement in classroom activities. So the questions that they're asked are, how focused are you in this class? How excited are you about going to class? When you're not in school, how often do you talk about things from class? I'm encouraged to hear about all of, that was coming out earlier this evening regarding our Teachers of the Year, the things that they're doing, our Technology Department, the things they're doing. All of those things are going to contribute to what students are saying. There was also a free response question. We had over 3,000 responses from our grades three through five who took the time to type in their answer, what can teachers or other adults at school do to better help you? And these were just a snippet of some that I thought you would appreciate seeing. Again, principals have access to their students' responses. Make learning more fun and interactive. Be funny. The TBRI practitioner inside of me just fell in love with the student that said, allow snacks or gum in the classroom because it helps me to focus snacks or gum in the classroom because it helps me to focus," because that's definitely one of the empowering principles that we go over in TBRI. So I was thrilled to see that a student was seeing that and acknowledging it. Here are the results of students grades six through 12. So you see, we had over 6,000 responses. The same topics were asked, except we had one additional topic that were questioned for the older students, and that was cultural awareness and action. That's asking how often the students learn about, discuss, and confront issues regarding race, ethnicity, and culture in school. Again, you can see the percentage favorable from their responses and then where we fall nationally as far as in comparison. So again, I wanted to pull one of the strength areas as well as one of our opportunities for growth. One of our strengths for our high school students are supportive relationships. This is so important coming out of this pandemic. I'm saying coming out, I'm being optimistic that we're coming out of this. We know the mental health crises that we're in right now. We see it. I know we have concerns regarding the suicide assessments that are being done in this district. And so the fact that our students feel like they do have support is so hopeful. But these are some of the questions they were asked related to that. Basically, it's, "Do you have someone you can count on to help you no matter what? And do you have someone who you can be completely yourself around?" And that was broken into a family member, a friend, or a teacher or other adult at school. And pretty much, I think, what anyone would expect. They feel supported most by family, then from a friend, but then still very highly from teachers at school. Here is an opportunity for growth, and this actually was for grades three through five as well as six through 12. But this was sense of belonging, feeling like a valued member of the community at school. We realize we have many students that feel very distant from their school buildings this year nationwide. So this is an opportunity for us to find ways. Again, I'm encouraged by the things that I've heard already this evening, but some of those questions are, you know, "How connected do you feel to the adults at your school? How much do you matter to others at this school?" So these are the areas that we want to target. And here are some of the free responses from those students grades six through 12. With this age group, we had over 6,000 take the time to have their voice heard. Some simply say, "Ask me if I'm okay." Some said, "You guys do just fine. I love my teachers." So there was a wide variety, but I just wanted to pull out a couple that I saw repeatedly or that kind of stood out. And again, hopefully this helps them to feel empowered and know they have a voice. We're asking them to share it and we want to do something with it. I'm going to let Crystal share the staff and teacher results.
Good evening. My name's Crystal Hooper, and I'm one of the elementary school counselors. I'm also a licensed professional counselor supervisor. So I'm going to review the staff and teacher survey results. And here are the topics, belonging, cultural awareness and action, school climate, well-being, staff leadership relationships, teacher self-reflection. We also did some free responses in this topic as well. Here is where on the district staff level, we had 116 responses, and a strength here is belonging, where district staff members feel like, "I like my job. I like being here." They were favorable, 52%. We do have some areas of opportunity, which we noticed across the board with cultural awareness and action, and it is some work that our district has already started as an initiative with the DRP project as well. School staff, 637 responses. Staff leadership and relationships, there was a great level of favorability for staff loving the buildings that they're in, you know? "I like working for my leadership. I like working for my principals." Some of the responses that were given, belonging, how much faculty and staff feel they're valued members of the school community. And so we thought those were good, too. And then again, the same place we have here where we rank nationally, and so we're right in the middle, so we're about average. There is some room for improvement, but they still were good overall favorable results. And then cultural awareness and action is something that we all know across the nation has been a struggle, and so our opportunity. Teacher only, we had 1,100 teacher responses, which is real, which was really good. Staff leadership relationships, teacher self-reflection, their perception of how I'm doing, you know? Do I need additional training in the classroom? Am I comfortable with certain materials? Well-being, how am I, how am I feeling? You know, how am I doing mentally? School climate, how does the building feel? These are all yet favorable. We have some areas of opportunity, but the numbers are still high for favorability. Here is our opportunity, school climate, 54% for staff, 51% for teachers. How respectful are the relationships between teachers and students? One of the disconnects that we, you know, notice are, in COVID, it's across the nation. We can't, parents are not coming into the building. The families are not as engaged because they're not as available. And so teachers may feel on an island a little bit, like, "I'm trying to connect. I'm trying to connect, but I just can't," you know? And so even staff and teachers with their principals with their, because everyone's in static groups and you may not be able to commune like you used to in the lounge, you know, lunch duty, they're pretty much about the business, coming in and getting out. How optimistic are you that your school will improve in the future? Eight, 58%. That's really good, actually, over 50%. But this is an area of opportunity, so these numbers can, of course, go higher than where they are. Cultural awareness and action, it's an opportunity here. How often do you think about other colleagues or different races, races, ethnicities, and cultural experiences? Across the country, we watched what's happening, and there's a reflection here. It's an area for growth. Our team has been brainstorming. Our team has been putting in some work to see how can we bridge the gap here in addition to what the district is already doing for students, but for staff as well, because we want everyone to feel accepted, we want everyone to be comfortable with having a conversation. We don't want people to feel like, "Oh, I can't touch that." You know, there's a, we do have diversity in our parish. And so here, our staff and teachers have a voice where they say, "I'm uncomfortable with talking about certain things. I may be myself uncomfortable with talking about certain things." And so I, we saw opportunity and people willing to learn. Tell me how to have conversations. Tell me what I need to say instead of saying this. Here, we're going to go through the next steps. So students ages three through five and six through 12, our strengths were supportive relationships and student-teacher relationships, and the opportunities were engagement and sense of belonging. Staff and teachers, strength leader relationships, belonging, staff self-reflection, and the opportunities were climate, cultural awareness, and action. One of the thing we look, one of the things we looked at is, what can we do today? Something that doesn't require the teachers to go above and beyond, something that doesn't require any additional work on anyone. We polled our schools and say, "What can you do between now and May to bring about change based upon the results that you've seen, based upon the voices that are being heard here?" And we got great responses on what the schools can and cannot do. So here's our district action plan. Our short-term goals, increase students' sense of belonging by actively and intentionally showing them how they are valued by staff and encourage students to engage in meaningful learning experiences both inside and outside the classroom. Every district employee will interact with students. They come in contact with by asking students favorite school subjects, sports. If you're coming on campus, sometimes I'm on, "Hey, how are you doing? What's your name? What sports are you doing?" Having, giving them eye contact, being conversational, one minute, no longer than one minute. Every TPSS employee, bus driver, cafeteria worker, secretaries, everybody on the list, "Good morning. How are you today? Great smile and find a way to connect." If it's the end of the day, "Have a great day. Have a great weekend." Acknowledging who they are, learning their name. Something as simple as addressing someone by their name makes them feel recognized.
Hey, Miss Akil. Did you see that? Why would somebody do that?
Please go into the classroom, no talking, quietly.
Hey, Miss Manna, tag me on.
We need your answer. How do you think that makes us feel?
I forgot my number. What's your name?
Jordan.
What's your last name?
Carter.
School is hard enough.
Come on in, sit down quietly at your desk and begin writing.
This kind of stuff just makes it hard.
I said quietly, please. Who's talking? Is it you, Sophie? Don't let it be you.
Don't believe me?
Sophie.
Please just watch.
I'm not up here for me, I'm up here for you. Pay attention, okay? Now, somebody answer me. Somebody needs to answer me really fast.
Every time we're ignored or yelled at or silenced, it takes away what's possible.
No horseplay, no running, and especially no talking.
Moment by moment.
Miss McGarvey, your students' behavior yesterday in the lunchroom, it was terrible. Next time, silent lunch. Did you hear that? Stay in line and catch a bubble. I'm not playing.
If this is education, we're in trouble. Bye, Miss McGarvey. President Douglas said, "Once you learn to read, you'll be forever free." The way it is now, two of the three of us will never be able to really read. It doesn't have to be this way.
Hey, Jordan. How you doing? Good.
Everyone we meet throughout our day can make a difference.
I've been waiting for you to arrive.
All the difference.
How are you?
How are you?
Great.
Oh, Jordan, bye, Jason.
Good morning, Jordan.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks for asking. How are you?
Good.
Go ahead, put your number in.
Talk with us.
I don't know my.
Not S.
That's okay, I'll look it up for you. Go ahead, sweetheart.
Okay.
All right. Teach us what we need to know. That's how we get smarter.
Well, good morning, Sophie, Alicia, and Jordan.
And when you talk with us and teach us, give us bigger and bigger words.
Now, what I'd like you to do, children, is turn around and converse with your neighbor and discuss where the mother might have gone.
Words that we can use to read and understand.
She has prayed for evils.
I saw she hung out late.
And that would take us places we could never reach without.
Remember, we're entering the learning zone. Now, how can we show our respect to the children and teachers who are working?
We can walk quietly?
Yes. Okay, kids, so what I'd like you to do is continue writing your narrative, documenting your emotions. If you were the baby owl and your mother abandoned you in the nest.
What can you do? Learn all that you can so that you can challenge us to be our best.
Need to study and assist them in whatever they need.
Share yourself with us and show us how to share ourselves with others. Give us courage. Give us compassion. Help us find our own voices so we can become who we are meant to be. Why would you want to silence us?
Wow. What a big difference. I'm going to let Amy come up now. Thank you. Obviously, we hope that the first half of that video isn't what we see now, but what we're trying to emphasize is all we're asking for, for our short-term goal to help improve some of these areas of opportunity, is the second half of that video. And it's not too much to ask, and I think that everyone is more than willing to engage and to try to make our kids feel more welcome. So I appreciate y'all hearing us out, and hopefully we'll continue to come back with more results as far as achieving these goals and moving forward. If y'all have any questions, we're happy to.
Can I say something? Amy, I would like to just say that this is an ongoing assessment. This was a baseline assessment. We'll repeat this again in the fall. And with this are lots of instructional-type, I mean, it's like little videos that, there's tools in here that the school can use within the Panorama software. Examples like this that they could show their faculty.
Directly linked to those areas of opportunity.
Yes.
So if a school principal had low numbered, I'm sorry, to, regarding engagement, there are direct links to evidence-based practices that they can immediately access and have a script of exactly how to implement some of these strategies.
And it's really to bring awareness to, sometimes we forget that, you know, as I said earlier, I was talking to a group earlier today, sometimes it's what, the things you say to children that that impression never leaves them. And so just bringing that consciousness to all of us, you know, being in a school, talking to the students as district staff, asking them how their day's going, all of that matters to kids. And we had the super, the school board conference, you know, that we went to, and this, one of the speakers was about ICU. It was about sense of belonging and that mattering to students. This really resonated with us as we heard this tonight, so thank you.
Fantastic. That's good to hear.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to mention that it's called the playbook. That's the intervention system that's within the Panorama survey results.
Yeah, and I just had one comment. Pretty much, this is something that's been needed for a while. You know, I perceive this as being, you know, an excellent tool. And I think that one of the things that, first of all, getting all teachers on board and getting them, and getting them sold on this idea because it's, it's actually a wonderful concept. And I think the thing that's going to, that's going to really make this concept work is persistence. You know, each teacher, each person deciding that they're going to be who they need to be to make this work and be consistent with that personality and not depend so much on how they, on what response they get from each child, because I have a feeling that some of them are going to be difficult, but I, but I think that by being persistent, that you will overcome even that, that difficult child, because once they understand that that's who you are and, and they're sold on it, I think that, you know, this concept will work.
Absolutely. I agree, and thank you for that. What we've been, Mr. Moore, what we've been doing is each week, our team meets, and as the team meet, we've offered to our building principals the opportunity to kind of consult with us. Let's look at your numbers individually. Let's look at the areas of strength. Let's look at the areas of opportunity in addition with the supervisors of the principals as well, so they are familiar with their, each one of their school's results as well. And so I think if we dialogue, and I've had principals call me personally to say, "Okay, I'm looking at my results. Tell me, you know, what are your thoughts?" And just dialogue back and forth, it's definitely a conversation, and it does take persistence. And I think that persistence is going to be us meeting, looking at, okay, where were they? Where are they now? Let's talk through it. What are your hesitations? What do you have reservations about? What do you need assistance with? And they have been taking advantage of that. And I think one thing that teams you just did with this survey that may not have happened in the past is they just gave everyone a voice, their students, their staff, teachers, just gave them a voice.
Yes, Mr. Toller?
Just one quick thing, you alluded to it earlier, but, you know, with all the precautions we're taking now with COVID, haven't we really just taken so many steps back in making this even harder to accomplish? Not that we can do anything about it, but, I mean, the teachers, we've handicapped them as far as hugging and touching and loving on kids. It just seems like we're making our, this job even harder.
And it is, and especially for those of us who are huggers and touchers, you know? But we can still make eye contact. We can still get down their level. We can still do things that are engaging that we know, research has shown, the connectedness that goes off in the brain when we do those things. So we just need to teach our teachers what that looks like. And an example that came up when I was talking to somebody about sense of belonging was, you know, the kids are saying, "I don't feel like I belong here." And if I have a teacher that says, you know, "I verbally praise that kid every day, and I tell that kid, 'Great job every day,' how do they not feel connected?" But if that kid's walking up to you wanting a high five and you're telling them, "Great job," well, he feels rejected because you didn't meet him with the high five. So it's finding out from him, what do you need for me to know you did a great job? Because it's the same message, but if their perception is, "I'm rejected because I need this," we just need to hear from them what they need. And they tell us, they're telling us what they need. So there are some hindrances, there are some barriers, but I think, I think there are ways that we can coach to overcome.
Right, and the same token even with the virtual students. It's even further out there that we, we have no contact with them other than through a monitor, you know?
Well, I'd like to add, too, some of our schools are doing a lot of this stuff already. They're just looking at, and this is one of the things that Dr. Hurst mentioned, you may be doing it already, how can you take the thing that you have in place and bump it up to the next level? And so where we can't high five, we can do an elbow bump, we could do a shoe bump, you know? There are little things that we can do to take a pulse, right? You can take a pulse in your class and say, "Okay, first two minutes, write down how was your night?" It's a bell ringer and, and use that, integrate it, you know, as an assignment. So there are little things that we can do. And I will say, when we put out the survey initiative, teachers were reaching out to their virtual students. "Hey, complete this survey." Hey, they got creative, because I've heard, we've heard so many stories of how creative they were to get the students that are at home to participate as well. And the ones that did not, you best to believe they're brainstorming about, okay, how can we reach those ones that were unable to participate? So that is in the back of their minds, and that's, that's big for it to be in the back of their mind and think, okay, moving forward, we missed, this is my percentage, well, how can I get more next time? So there are some little things that they can do.
Go ahead, Ms. Hader.
You know, listening to you with this presentation, it all goes back to what we learned in school, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that if a child doesn't feel comfortable or cared for or loved at school, with the teachers or the kids, you know, they can't really learn properly. And of course, same thing with, with the proper diet and food and all of that. And, and you know, when we're talking about not being able to hug and all, when you really care about kids and you doing what you're called to do, you exude love and care and acceptance of the students without even touching them at all. That doesn't seem possible, but it is possible because I've seen it in the schools. I've seen, I've been there. And it, you can do it without the touch because it's your demeanor. It's what comes out of you because you really care about a child. And a lot of kids, we all know, that school is the only place that they get a lot of care. And, you know, that puts a lot on us, but that's just the way it is. So thank you.
Yes, Ma'am, Maria, that, I mean, I, I heard it, it's stuck with me for years now, but it's, you know, kids don't care what you know unless they know you care.
That's right.
And so they're not going to hear what you have to teach until they know you care about them, so.
Anyone else?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, ladies. Going to move on to five, Consider Committee Reports. A, Finance Committee from March 2, 2021.
Move to adopt minutes.
Second.
Mr. Westmoreland made the motion. Mr. Toller, second. Mr. Toller, second. Any comments? Call for vote, Ms. Cindy?
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
On to B, personnel committee from March 2nd, 2021. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Sandra?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mingas. Any comments? Call for vote, Ms. Cindy?
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to six, the superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Yes, Madam President. First of all, item 6A, I would like to ask the board to consider approval to refer Section I, I'm sorry, Section I, which is the instructional policies to the policy committee. And this is part of the forethought manual review that we started a couple of years ago. And we have different sections that we, first of all, we look at the recommendations from forethought. Then our executive team reviews those together along with our attorney at all these policies. And now we're ready to refer these to the policy committee. This is Section I, instructional policies.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Ms. Sandra, a second from Ms. Mingas. Any comments? Vote, Ms. Cindy?
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B, just for general updates, I do have an update around the strategic planning. As you all may recall, in 2018, we started the process of developing a strategic plan for our district, a three-year plan that was approved by the board in December of 2018. That has, had become our blueprint for the work that we do in terms of, you know, academics, technology, HR, facilities. We've been working on that plan. It's time now to develop our second strategic plan, our 2.0 plan for the next three years. We have been fortunate enough to be part of a pilot in which the state Department of Education is providing the funding for us to work with a, with a provider, school leadership center. And with that, where we are right now is the first stage, which is we're gathering input from our stakeholders. I think in reflection of our 2018 plan, while we had a transitional team and while we had a planning team for the strategic plan, I think we could have done more with getting input from all of our stakeholders. So this time around for our 2.0, we're gonna do a better job of getting that input. We're doing a couple of things I want to share with the board and the public. One is we're doing a survey in which we're asking all of our employees, we're sending it to all of our students, we're sending it to our parents and our families to ask their input through a survey in which school leadership would take that survey along with some other data to help us with a needs assessment. Secondly, we're doing focus groups. We have teacher focus groups. We'll have principal focus groups. We'll have student focus groups in which school leadership will conduct those and gather the information from those groups. They'll also do one-on-one interviews with district parish leaders across the parish, getting their input. And in addition to that, we are going to engage the board much more deeply than we did in 2018 on, you know, your input and your feedback in this process, helping us to identify our priorities and the areas, our goal areas that we want to focus on. All of that, which is, you know, you know, data, informal data, and the numbers, the data, test scores, how students are, you know, doing academically, will all kind of come together to help us shape those priorities. So I just wanted to update the board on that. I'm excited about the input that we're going to be getting from our stakeholders. As Amy Fairchild said earlier in her presentation about hearing the voice, I think it's very important that we hear the voice of not just, you know, some people, but we hear the voice of all of our people. And, and so everyone will have the opportunity to weigh into our strategic plan for the next three years. And I invite you to participate, take part in those surveys and focus groups and things like that as we move forward. And our plan is to have final approval of a board of our strategic plan at the end of June. And then once that happens, you know, we will then begin to align our funding, our federal funding and our funding sources to support the plan in which has been developed by our people and approved by our board. That would happen in the summer. So I just wanted to update the board and update the public on where we are with that, that process.
Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Lee, just some timeline questions. And I see, I think Ms. Fussell's with us tonight to, on student transfer applications, it's normally around this time of the year that we start advertising that, you know, when magnet transfer applications are gonna be open, when they're gonna be due, what that process is gonna look like. I haven't seen anything on that yet. Do y'all have a timeline on, you know, when we'll be opening that process up and closing it?
Yes, April 1st through June 1st. And we will be, you know, pushing that information out and notifying current individuals that have transfers as well, but also pushing that out to the public. We'll be, we'll do a press release and release it on Facebook. We can email. We have a database of emails as well. So we'll do, do all of that as we get a little closer to April 1st.
And that'll be an online process like it's been in previous years?
Yeah, it'll be online. It'll run from April 1st to June 1st.
And then along the same lines, I know that your team is working on kind of defining what the virtual program is going to look like next year and then getting that information out to parents so that they can decide whether they want to take advantage of that. What, what is the timeline for, for that? Is that similar to that April to June or are we looking at later? What, what are we looking at there?
We, we want to have the same timeline for parents to submit their request to be virtual, full virtual for August. And I think we would like to align that to the same timeline as the magnet. And so I think we're close to releasing that information as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for superintendent?
Yeah, Mr. Lee, concerning, concerning that, the...
Concerning?
The virtual learning.
Okay.
Okay, for, for the fall semester. Or for the next school term, I think is when you basically have targeted going full virtual, having a different set of teachers teaching those courses. Are we gonna be going full Zoom? Are we gonna remain with the live casting that is currently in place?
Well, we'll have separate teachers that will be teaching all virtual. So I think what you'll see is more Zoom classes than, because this year you had teachers teaching students in the classroom and then teaching virtual. So yes, that should improve upon that, that piece of the Zoom. That's right.
Because that would, that would actually coordinate with the, the emotional learning.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Anyone else? All right, we're gonna move on to other board actions. Consider approval of the low bid for the 2021 new school bus lease purchase from Kent Mitchell Bus Sales for four regular 2022 buses for the amount of $84,143 each and two 2022 special need lift buses in the amount of $88,336. Mr. Schnabelbach? Nope.
Okay. I've got all the wrong names on my list.
We recommend approving the bid from Kent Mitchell Bus Sales for those six buses.
So move.
Second.
Any comments from board? Okay, call for vote, Ms. Cindy?
Okay. Voting is open. Did you want to vote?
We voted, okay.
Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously with Mr. Bush not being present.
Okay. Gonna move on to B. Consider approval of the resolution providing for the issuance of a sales, of sale of not to exceed more than $23 million of sales tax bonds of the parish school board of Tangepo Parish, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of such bonds and providing the payment thereof, providing, providing for the sale of such bonds, authorizing an agreement with the paying agent and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Our bond attorney?
Good evening. Tommy Hesper with Public Snow. Before I can kind of touch on this, I just wanted to say thank you. I appeared before you all, but I've not had the opportunity to say thank you for allowing us to be your, to service your bond council on this transaction. Look forward to closing this transaction efficiently and on time. Before you tonight is a consideration of a parameter bond resolution. This is the document pursuant to which these bonds will be issued. It is the second of two times that we, pardon me, three times that we will appear before you. First, we came seeking approval to make application to a bond commission, which we've done, the bond commission meeting that will, in all likelihood, result in approval of the issuance of these bonds since on Thursday of this week. All indications from my discussions with staff and with the executive directors that we will receive approval. After we have that approval, we'll begin marketing the bonds with the rest of the financing team here. It appears that we are looking at closing at or near the end of April, maybe the first week in May. And after the bonds, after we continue to proceed with the marketing of the bonds, we will come back one final time and set forth a question, pardon me, the adoption of a resolution that recognizes and ratifies the execution of the bond purchase agreement. So with that, I have to answer any questions.
Mr. Duncan?
I guess ultimately, I'll make, first make the motion to adopt the resolution so that we can get it on the, on the table.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Westmoreland.
I do have one, I guess, amendment to the proposed resolution, though. If the, if we can go to page seven on what y'all gave us, on the third paragraph of page seven, it says that we're authorizing an interest rate of up to, not to exceed, you'll see there, it says 7% in text, but then it says 5% in parentheses. And I just want to make sure we pick one or the other so that we... Yeah. Can we go with 5%? Great.
It is 5%.
So.
Yeah, here 4, maybe 3.
Sure. So I'll just, I guess I'll move that we amend the third paragraph of page seven where it says exceeding 7% to replace that with the exceeding 5%.
Second to the amendment. I guess we got a vote.
And we'll call for a vote on the amendment. Okay.
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes with Mr. Moore abstaining.
So then I, then I guess now we'll ask that we adopt the resolution as amended.
Unless there's further discussion.
Unless there's additional.
Yeah, unless we have further discussion on this. It's already made a motion in a second, so we need to go ahead and call for a vote.
So just, Ms. Jenkins, my motion is to adopt as amended.
Correct. Voting is open. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, sure.
Steven Losaguturne, the capital, just when we describe an interest rate not exceeding 5%, let's make sure we understand that certainly isn't where we intend this to come out. We set some, you know, some not to exceed number. But here in the bond market, think about it, just like interest rate, just like savings accounts, the longer your money stays there, the higher the interest rate is. So what will likely happen with regard to our bond market, bond marketing, the first year maturities during this 20-year bond could be relatively low compared to the 20-year maturity. So the blend of those will be far better than 5% what our expectation is. But we wanted to pick a number on the, on the long end that we know we can't, we won't exceed. And that's where that 5% comes in.
Thanks for the explanation.
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes with Mr. Moore abstaining.
Okay, Mr. Toller, you have a question?
Yeah, one, one follow-up question, Mr. Schnabelbach. It's not really about the bonds, but just in reference to the Phase 1 project. At what point can we start? I know we've done some preliminary work already, but at what point do we pull the trigger on actually getting some of these rolling as far as plans and...
Well, we already have our architects, we've entered into contracts with architectural firms to start designing. There's also, I think, building committees, I think Ms. Rose has met with the architects at one of the projects or maybe two of the projects. So we're, we're starting to get things moving now. And we're, we're in what we call the design phase, which it tends to be between four and six months. And then we'll have that bid phase and then we'll have the construction phase. So we'll come to y'all before the bid phase and get authority to go out and bid these jobs.
Correct. All right, thank you.
And certainly we'll have y'all see some of the design work before it's gone.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Moving to C. Consider approval of termination of support employee substitute. Ms. Dojinko?
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Stilly, board members. We come to you tonight, ask for the termination of the individual noted. I believe Ms. Crow sent you the information related to this individual Friday and is related to job abandonment.
That person elected not to come tonight?
Yes, that individual was duly notified through her and through her attorney.
Move to adopt administration's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Duncan, second by Mr. Westmoreland. Any questions?
It's not something that we can just bring to personnel. It has to come to the full board.
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, vote, Ms. Cindy?
Voting is open. Voting is open. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't open it. It's open now.
Mr. Jinko, this is about the fourth, third or fourth time this has happened in the last few months. These employees, they know this is fixing to happen, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Why did they choose to bring it to this level? I'm just
I don't know, Mr. Duncan. That's a very good question.
Mr. Bush.
They are notified. I'm sorry, Mr. Bush, they are notified. I can't
I'm just curious, because you know, I know you're sending them notices, you're meeting with them, you're working with them, you're going overboard to try to keep all of our employees happy and working, and here we are, and it's like
There are, the job was there for this individual, and for whatever reason, they chose not to take it, not to resign, and not to let us know anything. So we followed process, and unfortunately, we end up here with this.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cindy.
Mr. Moore. Voting is closed. Motion passes with Mr. Moore abstaining.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to personal privilege. Start over there on the other end with Mr. Moore.
All right, I'll get to go first this time. Okay, I'm going to make, I'm just going to do just one accommodation, and it is for this emotional program that we have going for the students, which kind of integrates one of the things that I think that is major as far as students' learning, students' learning is concerned, and that is whether or not the teachers care. And I think that this program is going to institute that. So I just want to give a shout out to the group of people who are taking care of that. Mr. Bush, he's not here, but if you're listening, yeah, shout out to you for that.
All right, Ms. Rose?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Simmons, for recognizing me. We were honored to be able to go to our national, our state convention last weekend. And so Ms. Jenkins can put into the record, please, myself, Mr. Tolle, Mr. Westmoreland, Ms. Abrams, and Ms. Sandra went to get our CLUs and
Ms. Janice as well.
Ms. Janice, I'm sorry, Ms. Janice. So we had a great learning opportunity. I think we had a great bonding time as well, and I appreciate the opportunity. I'm also very grateful to have been elected to serve as a representative of our parish, as a school board member on the state level. And I'm going to be the vice president coming up this next term, and then hopefully I'll be able to continue on into presidency in a couple of years. So I'm really happy about that. I'm really excited. It's been quite an honor to work with the state level. Also, I'd like to just thank everyone tonight for all the PowerPoints we had. Very informational information that we're learning and moving. Our system is wonderful, and I just am so grateful that people can appreciate what we, what we're seeing up here. We had a couple of hours of Students of the Year this afternoon. It was quite nice to see all the students getting that. Very simple ceremony, but very nice, very intimate for each child, and I appreciate the way y'all put that on for them. That was, I got to see like a little bit of it this afternoon, and of course, to congratulate our employees, our district winners of the year as well. So thank you. I think we're moving forward. We're doing great things in Tangiho Parish. Thank y'all.
Mr. Tolle?
Yeah, just congratulations again to Ms. Rainey for the Above and Beyond Award. We love Ms. Ficarra, and Ms. Rainey stepped up in Ms. Ficarra's absence and really did a good job at Roseland, so congratulations to her. Again, also to the Teachers of the Year. I wish we could have had all of them here and all of their families, but obviously with COVID protections, they could not. But our heart goes out to them. We love them, and we appreciate the work that they do in our school system. That's it.
Mr. Westmoreland?
Yes, I just did what we just heard from Ms. Dominguez and Ms. Tolle. Congratulations to everyone, our students, our teachers, doing a great job. We appreciate them.
Ms. Janice?
Ditto from on that end, too. Congratulations to the students and the teachers. Also, I'd just like to say that we at Tangiho Parish School System, we still have our eyes on Devonte Smith, and we saw that he signed with Clutch Sports today or yesterday, and it was just so fulfilling to see, because everything is coming back to I see you, I belong. And he humbly said that it's not just about seeing me as Devonte Smith, the football player, but Devonte Smith as the person. So we want to say we're proud of you and congratulations.
All right, Mr. Duncan? You good? Ms. Sandra?
Okay, again, we congratulate Rose, and also I have your article, so I'm going to give it to you tonight.
Thank you.
And then, of course, this Thursday, the 18th, on Tangiho 96.5, is the Tark Radiothon. And if you want to call on air, it's 419-0965 to donate or to talk to me, or anybody. But anyway, I'll be on at 8:00 with the Bailey family. And also, too, if you pledged and you didn't give me the money tonight, I'll gladly take it when the board meeting's over with. And thank all of you. Uh-oh, I'm collecting as we speak. Anyway, I really appreciate all of you that are supporting Tark. It means a whole lot to all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Well, you know, I wasn't going to say this, Rose, but my son was a perfect 4.0 at Academic Allstate, was in the paper. She mailed him the article. He still got it stuck on his bedroom wall today. He's 20 years old. I just thought about that. It was cool. But I want to leave this conversation like I always do. Miles Lyons. Do we know Miles? Well, we need to.
I know Miles Lyons personally.
He's a Punchetulah High School band student, a 2012 graduate of Punchetulah High School, and just won a Grammy this past week for Best Regional Roots Album. He's a professional musician. He's a member of the New Orleans Night Crawlers. He has the opportunity to travel all over the world. Let me tell you, you graduate from a Tangiho Parish high school, you can be a governor, a news director, a pageant queen, a Grammy winner, a Haseman Trophy winner. You can be anything you want to be. You, it's there for you. Just go out and reach out and grab it. Thank you, ma'am.
And you are correct about that. His parents are John Lyons and Marcia. His mom and stepdad were both band directors here at Tangiho Parish Schools, and his dad actually plays in the band Stormy. He's a saxophone player. So I've been knowing those people for quite a long time. Their daughter competed in pageants with my daughter. So congratulations to them. They, all of their children are very musically inclined. They're just all just great, great musicians. Rose, once again, congratulations on your award. We were all glad that we could be there for you this past weekend. Congrats to all the teachers that were received awards tonight. We really do appreciate you, all of our teachers going beyond their call of duty, and we know that they are striving to do what we have put out in this survey. We know that they're trying to do their best to make all happen. Once again, thank you, Ms. Sandra. Tark Radiothon is this Thursday, starting at 8:00 with Ms. Sandra and her family. But I have to say, we have Ms. Stillie on board this year as a celebrity, so we're going to see who's going to bring in the most money between Ms. Sandra and Ms. Stillie.
And she only gets 30 minutes, too.
She only gets 30 minutes, too. So I actually, that is my job. I work for Tark doing fundraising, and all of our fundraisers have been pretty much canceled this year. So anything that you can do, if you call in your pledge to 419-0965, we would appreciate it on Thursday. Ms. Stillie?
I just want to say that earlier today, I think, starting at 3:30, we recognized our Student of the Year winners from each of our schools. And so we started with our 12th graders, and, you know, the team had it excellently organized. We practiced all the safety precautions. I think the families really enjoyed it because they got to just kind of spread out and enjoy to take pictures. And then after the seniors, we did our eighth graders, Student of the Year from all of our schools, and then our fifth graders. And so we did them separately, each group. If you may recall, that usually in a typical year, when we recognize, we had this whole room is packed. They're all standing up. Everyone's kind of crowded. And so I think the families really appreciated that small group and, you know, the picture time and with the students. So I want to thank Dr. Frisell and her team, and they did an excellent job. And many of the parents commented before they left tonight, this afternoon, how much they really appreciated that. And also our Teacher of the Years that we recognized tonight and our winners, just representing all of our teachers and the great job that they do. And so it's, I just wanted to make sure that we mention them tonight as well. And congratulations, Ms. Dominguez, on your honor. And, you know, we're Tangiho proud, and you're representing us well.
All right, we're going to move into executive session. Mr. Duncan, would you like to read those?
Move into executive session to consider the cases of Irma Diamond and Mary Gibson versus Tangiho Parish School Board, and Erica Bumgartner versus Tangiho Parish School Board.
All right. Move into executive session. Alan?
Yes.